The second session of the Wayne Board of Education, PWS meeting of November 11, 2021, was convened in the conference room of the Wayne Board of Education, 15 Hills Drive, Wayne, New Jersey. The statement of compliance setting for time, date, location was read in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act and the roll call was taken. The meeting was recessed and is now being reconvened. Please rise for a flag.
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
Happy Veterans Day. Let's get started.
I heard we get that will take this.
Yes, or we some holiday. (inaudible)
Mr. Baba?
Here.
Mr. Duffy?
Here.
Mr. Giordano?
Here.
Mrs. Kazan?
Here.
Mrs. Kumar?
Here.
Mr. Pavlak?
Here.
Mrs. Putto?
Here.
And Mrs. Shear?
Here.
So, my administrative report tonight is pretty extensive due to the fact that really it's an administrative report for two meetings, so I'm going to go over a lot of different items, but I'd like to start our evening by taking a moment to recognize our students and staff, especially at our middle schools, for doing a wonderful job with recognizing veterans today. It is very happy to be able to attend the Anthony Wayne Middle School, and you can see the veterans were so touched by the songs and the poems and the music shared by our students, and then each of the veterans was recognized in a slideshow. There's an amazing annual tradition in our middle schools that continues, not because it's required, but because of a desire among students and staff members to recognize veterans. Really very touching. For the fall athletic season, I'd just like to take a moment to recognize our student athletes as they finish the fall season. We have no shortage of championships and no shortage of big victories, but I'll save this report for our student representatives who will be in attendance at our next meeting in a week. For now, congratulations to our student athletes and all of our coaches for an outstanding fall athletic season. This week, our newsletter, which will be distributed tomorrow, will include an article about one of our Wayne Hills High School students with an internship at Oakland Spine and Physical Therapy. This article is one of the many examples of how work-based learning opportunities are expanding in our school system, and they provide amazing learning opportunities for our students. These kinds of internships are often reserved for college students, but in Wayne, our students get a head start with interning. You'll be, you'll also find an emergent education agenda item number six for the marketing three capstone classes, which further expands this work, these work opportunities for our students. Thank you to Best Buy, the Clifton Little House, the hometown primary, the Medallion Chiropractic and Physical Therapy for hosting our students and providing them with valuable work experience. I have an update for the Board of Education and the community regarding the Burdane Avenue crossing at Wayne Hills. Two weeks ago, as an added safety measure, the school district started running a lunchtime bus service for students who would otherwise need to cross Burdane Avenue. Ridership at this point has been about 25 to 30 students per day, but while there is a safe crossing at Britain Chase, the district is taking this step as an additional effort to increase student safety. Mr. Rurik also reports that the bus has been a huge help in reminding students to get back to school on time. It's a good visible reminder for all students who are in that shopping area. The second part of my sidewalk update has to do with a meeting that was held October 19th with Mayor Vergano, County Administrator Anthony De Nova, Director of Secondary Education Matt Minionelli, and the Director of Public Works Heather Witz Del Rio. And I attended the meeting as well. There's clearly a shared interest in a long-term solution to people crossing Burdane Avenue at Wayne Hills High School and to building a sidewalk on the reservoir side of Burdane Avenue, not only for school students, but for a variety of other events and different situations where there is a need for people to cross Burdane Avenue. Project appears to be moving ahead very quickly with the Passaic County Water Commission, the owner of the property agreeing to the sidewalk installation, and Passaic County has agreed to split the construction cost of the 900-foot sidewalk with Wayne Township. The school board's contribution in this agreement would be to take responsibility for clearing the sidewalk of snow and ice when the weather's bad. While the attorneys for all four government entities must finalize a written agreement, the project is moving ahead in a very positive direction. It's not every day that four government entities can agree on anything, and so I think this says quite a bit about how we all came together to solve a decades-old problem. Also regarding enrollment, so I have a little report for that. We're in the process of completing the required state enrollment report, also known as the October 15th count, which is a snapshot of our enrollment for across the district, which is used primarily for funding purposes. We have almost 500 kindergarten students. We needed to open one additional class at Tunis to avoid overcrowding. In other locations, we're operating our kindergarten classes at maximum capacity. I'd like to talk a little bit about books. So, over the past few meetings, some concerns have been expressed about some of the books in our collections. After hearing these concerns, we advise all of our parents that if there were any concerns about books in our libraries, there was an opportunity under the board policy to file a book challenge. At this point, some people have requested the paperwork to file book challenges, but ultimately, we do not have any actual book challenges from the community. In order to take an internal look at our books and our libraries, however, and this includes our classroom libraries, the administration developed a book checklist, which is rooted first and foremost in our Board of Ed policies about library materials, but also under standards developed by the American Library Association Book Selection Criteria and the National Council of Teachers of English. The education committee met to discuss and review the checklist. By having this checklist, all of our librarians, classroom teachers, and our administrators have a quick and easy way to evaluate books that may be viewed as controversial. Keep in mind that this process does not replace the book challenge process. Building principals and their designees will conduct periodic reviews of library collections as they do annually. I just wanted to mention that I think there may have been a false alarm that was created, and there was a hope created, I think, in the community that we will be ending masking requirements on January 11th. Upon further review, Governor Murphy's executive order that requires masking does expire on January 11th, and Governor Murphy stressed, though, on his press conference on Monday, that even though the executive order does not expire in January, it should not be interpreted that it will be lifted in just those two months. Also, I want to provide a Washington, D.C. update for our middle school eighth graders. Starting in July of 2021, the district sought out information regarding a potential trip to Washington, D.C. for our eighth grade students. As reported previously, there were a number of significant issues, including the cancellation of the trip, loss of down payment, and the difficulty of insuring such a trip due to potential COVID outbreaks at school or general spikes with COVID, and the potential need to cancel a trip even up to the last minute before departure or during the trip. This summer, three tour companies were contacted, and since that time, we've been in contact with two additional companies. One company offered a price of $695 per student with a non-refundable $200 deposit if a student cancels, but no refund option if the school has to cancel the trip. Another company offered a student protection plan that allows parents to submit a claim based on death in the family, illness, hospitalization, but not for COVID issues like contact tracing or quarantine. The same company offers a cancel-for-any-reason protection plan at an additional cost that will cover 75% of the trip costs, although the company has not disclosed the price of this option. This being said, there are a number of reasonable concerns related to the trip. The end of the eighth grade year in Wayne is a time to bring our students together for some fun activities as they begin their transition to high school. We're concerned that the eighth grade trip would include far fewer students due to parental concerns over COVID, increased costs, the potential loss of down payments. With fewer students attending, the cost of the trip would likely increase. Depending on the comfort level of parents, quad occupancy may be a concern that would further increase the cost of the trip. Also, we will be traveling to locations where the CDC currently recommends quarantine after travel, which means when students come back, they would be quarantined. So, while we continue to evaluate the D.C. trip, and we know that things may change, the principals and the director of secondary education are actively planning safe and enjoyable alternatives for all students, and we also have to consider staffing. We also believe there will be an issue with staffing. At the end of September, niche.com, the leading platform connecting students and families with colleges and schools, released its 2022 best schools and district rankings. Now in its eighth year, the K-12 school rankings include updated data for 94,491 public schools, 2,488 private schools, 11,046 school districts nationwide. Our district did very well with the rankings, and the district received an overall grade of A. We were ranked nationally in four areas. Our schools are ranked as the number six school district in the United States as best school districts for athletes, number 13 in the nation for best places to teach, number 346 for safest school districts in America, and we are ranked 500, 511th in the overall category of best school district. The national rankings carried through the New York metropolitan, state, and local rankings. We picked up some additional rankings, including being ranked 105th in New Jersey for districts with best teachers, and we're also ranked 217 for the most diverse school districts in New Jersey. We're ranked as the top school district of Passaic County. This is exciting news and certainly a point of pride for the community. Also, on the agenda, you'll notice there is an item about Unified Sports. For the remainder of the year, we're happy to continue the program in partnership with the NJSA, and the Special Olympics Unified Sports joins people with and without disabilities, known as Unified Partners, on the same team. Dedicated to promoting social inclusion through shared sports training and competition experiences. It was inspired by a simple principle, training together and playing together is a quick path to friendship and understanding. In addition to basketball and track and field at the high school level, our Unified Sports has expanded this year to include esports and bowling. A pre-know school update, I'm happy to report that our early childhood program, a pre-know school, continues to grow. We started the year with 109 students, and we now have 129 students. In addition to more students in attendance, we have a number of students who transitioned from part-time to full-time. The education committee will be discussing plans that will allow for additional expansion as we are now approaching our maximum capacity. There's good news. As we move deeper into the fall season towards winter, our COVID numbers have decreased dramatically since the end of September. As it stands, we only have one positive staff member as of November 10th. One staff member was quarantining, seven students who have tested positive, and 37 students who are quarantined. The percentage of staff that is vaccinated is approximately 85%. So, note about a vaccine clinic. So, Wayne Township Department of Health will be conducting a vaccine clinic for children aged five to 11. The clinic is set for November 20th and December 11th. Both of these days are Saturdays. However, due to the extreme demand from the community, the Department of Health is changing the location. Originally, the clinic was scheduled at Anthony Wayne Middle School, but will now be held at multiple locations at Town Hall. Once made available, the 90 reservations for the vaccine filled up almost immediately. The Wayne Township Department of Health is seeking additional ways to provide more opportunities for vaccines based on popular demand. Few other notes. On October 19th, a group of stakeholders consisting of district bargaining units, administrative staff met to continue and discuss federal funding for COVID-19-related programs and projects. Members were provided an update and overview of the various waves of ESSER funds received by the district, the use of the funds up to this point, and the anticipated uses for the third wave. Members were given the opportunity to provide additional feedback, as the district will be working to finalize the grant budget for a November 2021 submission to the New Jersey Department of Education. I'd like to talk a little bit about Executive Order 253. Past few weeks have been a real challenge in the school district, and I'd like to thank all of our employees involved in carrying out all the behind-the-scenes work. Executive Order 253 includes requirements for all school employees to either be vaccinated or to undergo COVID testing. While it may seem simple, it was a major undertaking for the district, and it remains a struggle every week as we monitor the employees who must undergo testing. At this point, approximately, they said, 85% of our employees are vaccinated. I'd like to just report quickly on our election day, November 2nd. We held many excellent workshops for our staff, including a number of subject-specific training sessions at the elementary level. Offerings included adverse childhood experiences, writing PD, communication devices for MD and LLD paraprofessionals, iReady training, sculpture training for art teachers, behavior management for kindergarten teachers, optional technology sessions, including swivel training, and finally, there is an articulation time for all, as well as wellness sessions that were added at some of the schools. There's a required report that I have to deliver tonight, which is the SSDS HIV report. So, this is something that I have to do a few times a year. So, the semi-annual report under NJSA 18A 17-46 of incidents, violence, vandalism, weapons, and substance abuse offenses, and harassment, intimidation, and bullying, which took place in our schools during the period January 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2021. Pursuant to statute, I'm required to report to the Board of Education two times per year at a public meeting all acts of violence, vandalism, and harassment, and intimidation, and bullying which occurred during the previous reporting period. Tonight, I'm reporting the following incidents that took place during period two, January 1st through June 30th, 2021, as reported to the Department of Education through the SDSS system. This replaces the former Electronic Violence and Vandalism System. It also requires each school district to report more different data than in the past. For example, all HIV investigations, both alleged and confirmed, must now be reported. In addition, all removals, for example, suspensions for disemployer reasons, must be reported for both general education and special education students. So, the numbers being reported may appear higher in some instances than the totals reported in prior years. For that reason, it's tough to draw a conclusion on any increases in reported totals due to the state requiring more information under the new SSDS system. Our schools continue to maintain an excellent record of investigation, documentation, reporting, and handling incidents in a timely and efficient manner. For reporting period two, from January 2021 through June 30th, throughout the district, there were 38 incidents in total, recording zero incidents of violence, two of vandalism, zero weapons offenses, zero incidents of substance abuse, three incidents deemed other, which led to student removal, and 13 confirmed incidents of HIV out of a total of 36 investigated alleged HIV cases for the reporting period. The 13 confirmed HIV cases include the categories of race, two, ethnicity, and national origin, one, religion, zero, gender, eight, sexual orientation, two, and other, zero, for distinguishing characteristics of students. Cases were investigated by the school-level anti-bullying specialists with guidance and support from principals and the anti-district bullying, I'm sorry, the district anti-bullying coordinator. Consequences and remediation efforts for offending students include individual counseling, student or parent conferences of discipline, records with the district go-to contact, remedial measures for targeted students, including counseling, support services, parent conferences, schedule changes, stay-away agreements, teacher and aide monitors during the school day, adult-student pairings, and other monitoring measures. In addition, each school has instituted programming, including the district-wide initiative No Place for Hate, intended to reduce bullying and improve school climate. So, I have two HIV reports to give you. First of all, for the previous reporting period that occurred from October 28th, there were nine incidents of alleged HIV reported and investigated since that report, and three of those cases were deemed to be actual cases of HIV. For the current board meeting, this meeting, there were 10 incidents investigated, and four cases were deemed to be actual cases of HIV. Okay, so, this week, we introduced a new program to recognize students, staff, and community members for inspiring others or otherwise providing a boost to the school community. The program is called Present the Positive, and this will be an ongoing program. We'll continue to share these stories through our weekly newsletters, at board meetings, and on our social media channels. So, tonight, we'll be sharing seven of those stories. At this point, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Reichman to share some of those inspiring stories.
Good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll move a little closer. We have so many students and parents, staff members, community members, who do really inspirational and motivational things, and we are looking for ways to bring them, to all of you, to celebrate them and showcase them in the community. We have not done enough of that, and we keep hearing these stories. So, tonight, we're going to share some through a presentation. Moving forward, from time to time, we'll bring them to board meetings. You can see upcoming newsletters and watch our social media channels. And what was really great was we put this out on Monday, and we had an overwhelming response within a few hours, which, to me, was just an indication of so many wonderful things that happen in the community. We simply ask if you know the student who did something exceptional, a teacher or staff member that's been inspirational, or if there was a community event that was uplifting, you have a feel-good story, share it with us. We'd love to hear from you. And there are so many things that people do in the community that involve students, parents. We want to hear all those stories, because this is about our Wayne School's community. When we put this out, we just gave some examples, simple things, helping people out, finding a lost wallet or keys, returning them, donating time, so many things that kids do on a regular basis, parents do, to help our school community. I'm going to start out by sharing a few awesome students who were highlighted. I'm going to read the narratives exactly as they were submitted to me, so that they're completely authentic. These two students, actually, three students, Grace Steiner, Taylor Smith, and Natika Malik, were recognized by one of our Wayne Valley Assistant Principals. They are part of the We Act Club. The We Act Club, under the guidance of Ms. Felner, collected 1,140 bucks to send to a library in Uganda. Led by Grace Steiner, Taylor Smith, and Natika Malik, the students organized a book collection. The students also organized a pie teacher fundraiser, where students donated money to see their favorite teacher get a pie in the face. The students received more than enough money for shipping. This was a great opportunity for our students to provide assistance and donate to those in need. The next few students, Sophia Kim and Jay Ferreira. This was submitted by one of our history teachers. As leaders of the Wayne Hills Model UN Club, Sophia Kim and Jay Ferreira have both demonstrated exemplary leadership, putting in extra hours over the summer to prepare the club this year to be the strongest it's been in recent memory. They carefully developed a strategy to recruit more members to the club, providing training on Model UN procedures to incoming members, and finding ways to make club members feel connected to each other and the mission of the club. The progress they've made so far is recently shown in our, in our club's mock conference held after school on November 9th, 2021. They successfully led the club and prepped them to be successful delegates at regional conferences held at high schools and universities nearby. Sophia and Jay deserve to be commended for this work. Now, we're going to showcase a few of our motivating teachers. This first one was submitted by a parent of one of our students, Max Carter. Ms. DeCee Basilicato, our instrumental music teacher, is being recognized. She's the director of bands at Anthony Wayne Middle School. Despite a challenging situation, especially for instruments during the 2021 school year, she and her team managed to put together an incredible spring concert for May 17th for seventh and eighth grade students who played beautifully in the light rain while wearing face masks. We witnessed firsthand how she nurtures and encourages musical talent development by working with parents as a team. Mrs. Basilicato is indeed an inspiration. The next teacher we're going to recognize is Ms. Heather Altamira, a fourth-grade teacher at James Fallon. This was submitted by the parent of Aiden McKenna. Mrs. Altamira was my son Aiden's fourth-grade teacher last year at James Fallon School. We had recently moved to town, and this was Aiden's first year in a new school. But I understand the support and support all the necessary requirements for the safety of students and teachers starting in a new school during pandemic, with remote learning, social distancing, and mask-wearing, and all the other obstacles was understandably very challenging for a student. Mrs. Altamira was welcoming, positive, and motivating. She went above and beyond to make Aiden feel like an important member of the class community from day one. Despite all his early worries, my son soon began to enjoy school and being a part of a class at James Fallon Elementary. Ms. Altamira's year-long positivity, encouragement, and kindness resulted in an auspicious, an auspicious transition for Aiden and his successful first year in a new school. I will always remember the positive effects she had on my son, and I'm forever grateful for her dedication to Aiden and all her students during a very difficult time. This next slide is dedicated to staff members that go an extra mile. Up top, we have an administrative assistant, Megan Dory, at Wayne Valley High School. This was submitted by a parent. She said, Wayne Valley's administrative assistant, who runs back and forth the door a gazillion times a day to deal with parents, is so friendly and polite, despite the fact that I'm sure she has to manage difficult people. So, we're very fortunate to have her. Then we have Ms. Julia Kelly, a school nurse at Tunis-Dye Elementary School. This was submitted by one of our parents. Ms. Kelly is a bright light in my daughter's day. She's been part of her education for a few years now. She's always kind, cheerful, and it's a safe place for my daughter to fall if she needs somebody. I feel fortunate that my daughter is in such great care when I'm not with her. And down at the bottom, we have a submission by a math teacher at Wayne Hills to recognize Mr. Jacob Cavens, our Assistant Principal. Mr. Cavens of Wayne Hills High School has been doing a phenomenal job this year, and last, guiding his teachers in his department he supervises through this trying time of teaching. He continually gives support of all kinds, such as having his teachers work together to figure out how to fill in learning gaps from last year and checking up on teachers' well-being. He's a genuinely kind individual that goes above and beyond to make sure that Wayne Hills runs smoothly on a daily basis, doing such things such as finding teachers to cover for absent teachers, making sure all special needs students have their assigned paraprofessionals for the day. On top of all this, he does a terrific job being there for the students. He uses a kind and firm approach to make sure they grow into well-rounded adults in the future. He's incredible patience for any distressed students, making sure they learn from their mistakes, and I know, and I know they are being listened to. We will continue to share this out. There's a link in the presentation, which we'll post tomorrow, and we invite you to continue to share your submissions with us. And please look out on our social media channels and continue to read our newsletter, so we can share some great things that are happening in the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Reichman. What a wonderful program. So nice to see the positive things that are going on in the district. Okay, so, you're up again.
I'm up again. Okay, so, women, what I'd like you to do is, I was wondering if you could pull out the Athletic Booster Club Guidelines that I provided to you in draft form, and this is on the agenda. It's a public work session, but it is Section K, public work session, administrative item number one, Booster Club Guidelines. Okay, so, over really the past probably six months, maybe a little longer, there's been a discussion in, within the high school athletic communities about a Booster Club guideline, a manual, something to assist, standardize the operations of each of our Booster Clubs, and to protect the integrity of each of the Booster Clubs, to make sure that, you know, that ultimately, we have a set, set of standards, and also that all Booster Clubs are aware of our policies. And so, in the end, it's an important tool that is intended to communicate information from the Board of Education, but there's also a process involving feedback from the parents who are involved with the Booster Club, so we can hear their perspective on some of the things that appear in the guidelines. So, we have a foreword, and then we get into a table of contents, and then after that, the Booster Club Guidelines really consists of a number of district policies, because in the end, the Booster Clubs operate under a number of district policies. The district policies that are included here go on for a number of pages, and those district policies are all of the policies that we suspect might be relevant to any of the Booster Clubs. So, it's a collection of excellent policies that are great reference and important information for every Booster Club to review every year. The first one is the most important one. It's District Policy 9190. And so, if you go through that, one of the things that became a concern during this discussion was really item number one. So, earlier tonight, the board had a legal discussion about item number one, which requires Booster Clubs to be incorporated as nonprofit organizations and to file a copy of the certificate of formation with the school business administrator. So, that's the existing policy that we have. However, we know many of the smaller clubs have not gone through the process of forming what is known as a 501(c)(3) organization because of the paperwork, the reporting requirements, lack of awareness about what needs to be done. So, it's an important thing. The board will continue to discuss this particular requirement, because right now, many of our Booster Clubs do not, do not follow number one, which is okay, because the standard had not been previously established, yet that is an important element in the policy, and that's intended to protect the board and the Booster Clubs as separate entities. Also, number two, it says, enter into contract with the board for conduct of activities. That is a requirement to basically submit additional information to the Board of Education about Booster Club activities. So, that is, that is really one of the key things, and the board, in this situation, may have to, if the board is interested, talk about the policy, maintaining the policy. If there are adjustments that could be made, our attorney provided guidance that says there are not really many options for the board, but perhaps this is a time, if the board wanted to discuss some aspects of a Booster Club policy, try to keep going.
Does anyone have any comment? Yes? Section, Mike?
Oh, sorry. I, no, it's okay. It's fine.
We're in our relaxed meeting.
Didn't do it until a long time ago. The only thing I had to say is, obviously, the 501(c)(3) is important. That's to be, that has to be first and foremost, because it does protect us, and it is what the recommendations are. For the clubs that don't have them, I mean...
And the Board, in this situation, may have to, if the Board is interested, talk about the policy, maintaining the policy. If there are adjustments that could be made, our attorney provided guidance that says there are not really many options for the Board, but perhaps this is the time, if the Board wanted to discuss some aspects of a booster club policy, try to keep going.
Does anyone have any comment? Yes? Section, Mike?
Oh, sorry.
No, it's okay.
We're in our relaxed meeting.
Didn't do it until a long time ago. The only thing I had to say is, obviously, the 501(c)(3) is important. That has to be first and foremost because it does protect us and it is what the recommendations are. For the clubs that don't have them, I mean, I think the pooling idea is a good one. I mean, I think maybe we need to explore that a little bit. Kind of, if they don't want to do it, then that's fine, but we can explain a little bit on how it's going to work.
So, for members of the public, what Mr. Bubba is talking about is the pooling of a 501(c)(3) certificate, meaning that multiple clubs would operate under that certificate. Is the outside, is the outside up?
Is there not a microphone available that can make it more audible? We can...
Are you having trouble hearing us?
I couldn't hear. Was there a microphone available?
There is.
Oh. Is there a way to do it?
It's on, it should have been working, so.
Mr. Bubba is checking right now to make sure.
Okay. I'm pretty good at that. I may be able to help.
He's working on it right now, but thanks. So, I'll just try to talk a little bit louder.
Yeah.
So, I was explaining that Mr. Bubba raised the issue about the possibility of different booster clubs sharing 501(c)(3) certificates. So, just providing that information for the public in case you were wondering about the conversation that was going on. I was trying to just shed a little insight into what was being discussed. So, the guidelines also include information that is important regarding volunteer coaches. It includes information about the use of school facilities. It has to do with security, insurance, equipment. So, it is really a very extensive manual, and it adds up to over 50 pages. The booster club requested an index of different members of the booster club. So, one of the things we did to accommodate them was we set up booster club contacts for both high schools. So, Wayne Hills has contacts, Wayne Valley has contacts. And so, added together, we provided that so that way, all the members of the booster clubs could be in communication. The other part of the guidance includes information about how to incorporate as a nonprofit in New Jersey. So, there's a question and answer section that basically would help any members of the booster clubs that are interested in forming a nonprofit organization. There is information about running raffles and other legalized games of chances. So, now I'm on page 38, for those who are following along. And so, that information is provided, including the contacts in the township if you wanted to run a legalized game of chance as a booster club. That information is provided. There's also a statement, one of the issues that existed for many years is there were questions about taking electronic payments. So, whether it involves fundraising, using electronic payments, whether it involves purchasing things with electronic payments. The issue of electronic payments has been an issue for a long time. Ultimately, our business official determined that as long as the electronic payments are tracked in a non-electronic manner with record-keeping, as you would for any other fund, it's acceptable as a business practice for booster clubs. So, that should help our booster clubs quite a bit in terms of raising funds or paying for things. And then, as you go along further, there's just appropriate and inappropriate uses of booster funds. Now, I'm on like pages 44 and 45.
I wanted to stop for one second. Did anyone else have a question before we continue? Insurance.
Yes.
Who's monitoring, and are we making sure that they have liability insurance?
So, that's something that would be done at the high school level. Some of the booster clubs, at this point, they operate, they just start cash-in, cash-out. They're very simple. They raise a little bit of money and...
I was just thinking that might be another umbrella situation. It could be expensive to purchase liability insurance. I know the PTO doesn't, but they have deeper pockets than a typical small booster club. So, that would be a second concern along with the 501(c)(3). And I'm still trying to find it, but somewhere in here, as I mentioned, that a member of the community notified me about because they couldn't be here this evening, was the two people per bank account minimum. So, there's checks and balances over the money that the parents raise and donate to the clubs.
And it'll always be two.
Yes, I just want to make sure that that's carved in here somewhere because she didn't see it, and now I'm looking for it, and...
Well, that's something we'll go back and check. Let me just write a note down about that.
Okay. I may have overlooked it, I don't know.
All right, we'll go back and check. Mrs. Kazan was expressing a concern making sure that for any check that's written, that there would be at least two signatures.
No, that there's two people on the account.
Oh, two people on the account, I'm sorry.
On any checking account for any booster organization so that there's not only one person handling the money in and out of an account for the booster organization. There needs to be at least two so that two people can count the money and there's both signing off, this is how much we collected for this event. It's just a common practice for any organization for safety and security of the funds.
Great. So, then finally, towards the end, there is guidance for the booster clubs from the National Booster Club Training Council. So, there's 15 tips for booster club members. And that concludes my presentation about the booster club guidelines. Okay? So, at this point, what we've done is we've raised the volume to its maximum level. And so, you should be able to hear it in the hallway.
Much better.
It should be out here. So, it's now, the volume was at the regular level, but now we've raised it because there's a significant number of people in the hallway.
Part about the funds, club accounts, but again, I'm not seeing it.
We'll go back and check.
Okay, very good. All right, did anyone have any other questions or concerns about the manual? It's on a PWU, so it's not getting approved tonight, so moving forward. Do you want to make any changes now? It'll be the time.
Actually, they have a whole document here. What I would like to see, because this is a very large 52-page document, can we break this down to have, to include like a bullet point in it? You know, filing, what needs that? Like, do it kind of so that it's a quick overview of this rather than the 52 pages? Because I can tell you most people aren't going to read it, and then they're going to say, "I never..."
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, yeah, but the table of contents just kind of tells you where to find things. I'm talking about, you know, if you have specific filing dates that have to happen for a season. You know, where we know that they have to put in whatever they're going to request for, you know, events or anything like that, but give them dates, give them, you know, or at least timeframes.
So, we can condense, there's some of the, there's some financial reporting pages that could sort of be condensed, so we reduce some pages like that.
Exactly.
You can't reduce the policies.
Something like the building classes, the dates and things like that.
But I would just like to see it be out there.
Try to condense it.
Try and condense it a little bit, even if you throw it at the beginning of the booklet. So, that way, you know, because you know how people aren't going to read it, and it's going to be a problem.
I'm sure most don't know these policies even exist after all the years of booster clubs being run.
That's true, but I'm just, that's why I kind of say in the points to, hey, read the policy. You know, that's...
Well, that's why we're trying to put it all together in one place finally. Anybody else on the booster club?
This is a public document, correct?
Yes.
And all these people agreed to have their phone numbers put out?
They knew it was part of a manual, so I believe so.
Can we make sure before this goes out to the public?
Yes.
Because I wouldn't hold my phone, really.
It was already attached, yep.
Yeah.
That's actually, could be an internal document at the high schools. It's not really part of a, an instruction manual or a regulations or guidance or policy.
Okay.
I agree, Mrs. Shear. Anyone else? Thank you. This has been a long time coming and a lot of work, and hopefully, you know, we can get better oversight of what's occasionally been an issue here and there. All right. Revisions?
Yes, we have some tonight. First, a change to the Board Agenda is under Section M, Human Resources. Number two, approval of leave requests. Number nine, ID, number 8549, leave dates of January 3, 2022 through April 29, 2022 is without benefits. M3, which is approval of appointment of district staff. Number one, Patrick Wallace, change end date from May 25, 2022 to, I'm sorry, March 25, 2022. Moving on, under the Emergent Action Section, under T, we will be revising T10, approval of reappointment district staff, paraprofessionals. We revise number 207. Salary should be $22,911, not $23,244. We are adding T12, which is approval of WEA Memorandum of Agreement and Salary Guide. We are also adding T13, which is approval of W... Excuse me, I fail to read the Agenda Resolution. So, I'll go back to number 12, which is a WEA memorandum. "Resolve that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of a superintendent, approve memorandum of agreement with the Wayne Education Association, dated September 23, 2021, together with Exhibit A, Exhibit B, 138, and the salary guides for the period from July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024, and further authorizes the President of the Board of Education to execute the new collective negotiation agreement reflecting the memorandum of agreement and incorporating the salary guides as discussed in the executive session." And back to T13, which we'll add, is approval of WPA Memorandum of Agreement and Salary Guide. That reads, "Resolve that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of a superintendent, approve the memorandum of agreement with the Wayne Paraprofessionals Association, dated September 30, 2021, together with the salary guides for the period from July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2025, and further authorizes the President of the Board of Education to execute the new collective negotiations agreement reflecting the memorandum of agreement and incorporating the salary guides as discussed in the executive session." Moving on to School Resources Legal, which is Section X, we will be adding X1, which is approval of settlement agreement. And the action reads as follows. "Resolve that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of superintendent, hereby approves a settlement agreement and release in the matter of student ID number 4751591137, OAL docket number EDS05940-2021N, agency reference number 2021-32990, as attached by reference, and further authorizes the Board President and Secretary to execute same on behalf of the Board. The Business Administrator and Superintendent are authorized to take all further steps required by the terms of settlement to further implement same." We're adding X number two, which is another approval of settlement agreement. And that action reads, "Resolve that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of a superintendent, hereby approves a settlement agreement and release in the matter of student ID number 5597618004, as attached by reference, and further authorizes the Board President and Secretary to execute same on behalf of the Board. The Business Administrator and Superintendent are authorized to take all further steps required by the terms of settlement to further implement same." Moving on to Revision, under EE, Emergent, we will be removing Number One, which is approval of authorization to submit grant as discussed in the Education Committee meeting. The committee does not want to move forward with the grant. Moving on to Emergent II, we are, okay, well, that is actually it for the end of the Agenda Review.
This is for our first public portion for Agenda Items Only. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on Agenda Items Only. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about employees or a student. The Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students should be duly responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under all business. Can I get him over?
No.
Second. Anyone wishing to address an Agenda Item this evening?
I see nobody, Mrs. President, I move close.
Second, Duffy, Mrs. Shear. Okay, let's move on to the Agenda. Well, we're going to either move it or break it down.
Move the entire Agenda and make that motion.
Sir, Mr. Duffy, Mr. Pavlak. Full Agenda. I'll call Mr. Mopet.
Mr. Bubba?
T12, I will be going, no. The issue I have is when you're looking to hire teachers and they're not getting raises the first two years, basically, that they're here is a problem to me. So, I'm not going to support that, otherwise, yes, everything else.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
T12 and T13, for legal reasons, I have to abstain. I say yes to everything else.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
Mr. Pavlak?
Yes to everything. I abstain on T12 and T13.
Mrs. Putup?
Yes.
Mrs. Shear?
Yes to everything, except I'm going to say no to... Oh, that's public work session, never mind. For the guidelines, I'd like to see the phone numbers removed, and I'm going to abstain on T12 and 13.
That's an extension on 12 and 13 and T. Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Motion carries, which includes the WEA, which is for...
Mr. President, if I could just wait for a second.
Oh, I was just going to say, congratulations. We settled two very large union contracts. So, our staff will be receiving their raises and retro pay in time for the holidays. And if there was a long negotiation, we would want our staff to know that we appreciate them very much. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Duffy.
I want to apologize, technically, I am on duty right now in the firehouse. I have somebody covering for me. I tried to make time to make it to this meeting because I know it's an impolite, there's things on the agenda that need to be considered. I recognize the crowd that's here and, you know, what you're here for. I can understand and appreciate what you're here for. However, I'm going to miss all of your thought-welt speeches. I apologize once again, and you all know where to find me. But I'm sorry, I have to go back to work. With that being said, may I please make excuse for the table?
Let the record reflect, Mr. Mopet, that Mr. Duffy had to leave for a related matter at 8:30.
Okay, yes, thank you. No, it's all right. Stick right up this. No, you're not going to be able to get up. Okay. Yeah, listen, I'm trying to help you apart. I apologize, I'm sorry. Yeah? Nope.
Okay, well, Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Discussion on the Agenda.
You have reports?
Committee reports.
Ah, committee reports, thank you. It's been a while, forgot how to do the job. Go ahead, Mrs. Kumar.
Okay, so tonight, I actually have two Education Committee reports. We met once on October 21, which was off Meeting Day just because of timing as to when things worked for all committee members. So, it was myself, Ms. Albanese, and Mr. Giordano in attendance along with the administrators in attendance, Mr. Reichman, Dawn Aragaz, Matt McMillian, Dr. Toback at this meeting on October 21. We discussed, as Dr. Toback has stated already in his report, the book selection checklist that should be gone through through the supplemental resource and classroom library. He already went over the book challenge forms in his report along with how we are currently reviewing collections. So, that was what... So that was what the 21st meeting was about. And the November 11th meeting, which is tonight, Ms. Reichman, Ms. Landausee were the administrators in attendance, and Mr. Giordano and I were also in attendance of the board members. We discussed the October 7th and October 21st education committee minutes, and we reviewed a residency request. And we actually went over the nursing plan, which is very comprehensive for our entire district. It was very eye-opening, and it was good to see what our nursing coordinator does. And that concludes my point. Thank you. Mrs. Puttup?
The Personnel Committee met on October 28. Paul Clark, our Director of HR, Compliance and Labor Relations, is our administrative liaison. Mrs. Shear and myself were in attendance. We reviewed the Personnel Committee minutes from September 23rd, and we also went through a review of revised job descriptions in the business office, in facilities, and in central office administration. And those will be appearing on the agenda. This evening, the Finance Committee met. Mr. Pavlak, Mrs. Kazan, and myself, along with our administrative liaisons, Mr. William Moffett and Mrs. Cheryl Lyden. Our agenda items included going through things that are on the agenda, the check register, financial reports, contracts, transportation agreements, policies A five-five-zero and six-one-one-five, dual-use applications that are in effect in some of our schools, and a comprehensive maintenance plan as outlined by Mr. Moffett. We keep track of all maintenance work and the costs over years, which helps us inform what we're going to spend moving into the following year. Our audit procedure continues, but should be over soon. We went through policy revisions for six-three-one-one. We went through a business office update. There will be a new accountant joining the business office. And we discussed the New Jersey Department of Education's requirements where we can keep up to four percent in surplus. The 2022 and 2023 budget discussion has begun. Working toward a final budget plan in the spring. Mr. Moffett will put together, again, a Board of Education virtual binder. If you need an update on your password to get into the virtual binder, Mr. Moffett will help you out. I lost mine, so. And we will be reviewing the budget process as we go through it over the course of the next couple of months. And then we will, because we have full-day kindergarten, there will be a resolution in December dismantling the KRAP program. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mrs. Shear?
Tonight, we met for Technology and Safety Committee. It was Dr. Burchard, myself, and Mr. Bubba. And we were given an update on the email retention policy that we are looking to set up that will follow the New Jersey Records Retention and Disposition Schedule for local education agencies. We got, we discussed upgrading some of our cameras throughout the district. An install update, we are still waiting for equipment to arrive from orders that were placed in the summer. Unfortunately, there's no way to deal with that, but wait. We have started receiving some of our interactive boards, and as soon as they come, they're scheduling to have them installed. And we also discussed our phone system update that is moving forward with phase two of the upgrade, and we're looking to complete another school by the end of December. And then I just have a question for the education committee.
Sure.
Can you just explain to me the book challenge? Is there, if they fill out the form, what happens next?
If you fill out the form, the next step, I actually feel like doctors will have to be.
I can answer it. Or, because they've really been involved in this more than I have.
I want to just know, like, is there a committee that looks it over?
So you have to submit your request to the building principal, and then there is a committee that is assembled. It's all detailed in the standard operating procedure. And then there is, basically, the outcome will be communicated out. But the form does need to be completed and submitted entirely.
And once a book challenge is put in, are we removing that book while we review it? Or are we still leaving it on the shelves?
While it's being reviewed, it's off the shelf, while it's under review.
So is this a quick process? Because I hate to remove books from our shelves.
There's a timeline that's really clearly defined, and yes, okay.
So there's a certain timeline?
There's a certain timeline that the committee has to be assembled and made.
Well, it's only, the book can be reviewed, but nobody is entitled. There's no administrators, nobody can take the book on their own and remove it. The Board has to, and the other part about it is that the Board has to have a written explanation in the event that a book is removed. There has to be a written explanation from the Board determining why it would be removed.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Sorry, I actually have to leave for a family emergency. I will hopefully be able to catch up with whatever else may have happened. Unfortunately, I got to take care of some things happening at home.
Sorry. It's okay.
Yeah. I just take care of her.
Only three more.
Okay, dropping like flies. Thank you. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded tonight or subsequent meetings under old business. Can I get them over?
No.
Mr. Giordano, Mrs. Shear. All righty. You guys ready to move on?
You want me to?
I think Mr. Bubba.
I'll let you know. Are you ready?
Yeah, man.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, this is, well, actually, it's nice to be in an actual meeting for once where we have everyone show up to the meeting. That's beautiful. It's beautiful to see everyone show up for a meeting for once. That was nice to watch. And even though we had to sit for an hour, it's fine. We got to speak. And I think what everyone's concerned about is they don't understand why this has been moved to such a smaller room when we have so many people inside and outside. We talk about concerns for social distancing, concerns for that. If you're concerned about social distancing, why are we in this tiny room when you could have had it in any of the schools in this district? We chose to do it, what's it for, normalcy? This isn't normalcy. It's intimidation of freedom of speech, because you want to intimidate people, not the cops. I, if, I would denounce any threat against any board member or anyone on administration. But that does not mean we need to intimidate everyone not to speak that wants to speak respectfully. Because putting us in this tiny little room with little air, with this, is hard to breathe and hard to stand with. And I hope that we don't pull this every single meeting now. Because if we do, then people are going to stop coming, and you'll get what you want. But I will not stop coming. And I will not stop because I want to be here and I want my voice heard. Because it is our freedom of speech, and it is being intimidated here. The people that are in that hallway, the reason why we couldn't hear you is because the amount of people that were in that hallway that wanted to speak, they were talking because they didn't know what was going on, they couldn't hear. Their voices are not heard now because, congratulations, you succeeded on intimidating some people. That's a real thing to be proud of, real thing to be proud of. I just can't, I'm beside myself, that I really was starting to like, like, understand things going on in this board, why some people are upset. Now, I just, I don't understand why you don't want to hear what everyone wants to say. Why do you want to limit your group? Because it's much different from being out in that open air, from being in this little tight, compact room with little to no people wearing this, where you could barely breathe in a room with little to no ventilation, where it's extremely hot. It is not fun. It is not anything that I would ever encourage to happen again because people won't have their voices heard. And then masks, I'm not sure if that's a requirement outside now because in schools, they're starting to tell kids they need to wear these outside, which I'm not understanding to some students. It's, I just want to clarify if you have to or not because some teachers, depends on the teacher, there's been teachers that have told some kids, you have to wear this outside. There's other teachers that say you don't. It's not, I'm not saying anyone's doing anything wrong. I want there to be a clarification on what the mandate is and what are the exceptions. Like I always call upon this board to do every time, he, tell all of them, all the teachers, the exceptions. Tell them the exceptions. That'll be it.
Thank you.
It's like we're on a little airplane, heading to LA.
Hey, the record show I had to climb over several people to get to this podium because you have 25 people in a very tiny room. I'll keep my voice up. My name is Norman Robertson. I live in Wayne Township. First and foremost, thank you, veterans, for making this meeting possible. A quick note on your last meeting. I was really looking forward to hearing from our neighbors who are part of the LGBT community. When it comes to questions of inclusion and gender, their input is absolutely essential. Unfortunately, you stood everybody up. I ultimately hope that we can have a productive dialogue. Meanwhile, I was very disappointed to see this letter from the leadership of the WEA. Unfortunately, they chose to, and this was to their members, unfortunately, they chose to substitute name-calling for genuine dialogue. Maybe in the future, that'll change. Now, to the Board, and this is a little esoteric, it would be a mistake for you to think that a town this large, that no one understands critical theory. I didn't say critical race theory, I said critical theory. And I know that some of you know about this. Critical theory is a postmodernist, neo-Marxist political and social construct that includes things like critical race theory, critical feminist theory, gender theory, queer theory, post-colonial theory, just to name a few. It arose in the European Marxist communities, primarily in France and Germany after World War II. Among others, it includes Professor Herbert Marcuse, who later came to the United States, inspired a young acolyte named Angela Davis. It was her, he was her PhD advisor. Perhaps most pertinent to us here is the concept of critical pedagogy. To those of you who graduated more recently, I'm sure you were taught this. That was formulated by a Brazilian Christian socialist named Paulo Freire. He wrote the 1968 book, Pedagogy of the Oppressed. The reason I'm mentioning all of this to you is to let you know that you have, all the things that you've done in the last year, not everything, but all the major things that people are concerned about are just steeped in critical theory. For example, you can draw a direct line between Marcuse, Angela Davis, her most ardent admirer, Ibram Kendi, and the Wayne Township Summer Reading Projects. At the same time, your new mission statement borrows liberally from the language of critical pedagogy, in ways that three minutes wouldn't allow me to explain. But here's what happened. The superintendent supplied you with someone to facilitate your planning process. However, her title was not a facilitator, her title was a trainer. She may have been inspirational, but it probably didn't occur to you that you were being trained. The same thing happened with the committee that redrafted the mission statement.
Time, Mr. Robertson.
Oh, well, I'll come back and finish it.
This is nice, like a dog pound.
Is he Duffy a fireman, he said? This is a lamb? This is a lamb? Where's the fire? Where's he go? Can he approve this?
Hi, everyone. Melissa Woolshire, Eighth Stone Hill Road in Wayne. I had the pleasure of speaking with Sean Duffy before he left. And I asked him the same question I'm going to ask you. And I come here with a really sad heart tonight because I've spoken to various members here about mandatory vaccines and parental choice. And I was always reassured that parents would be able to have choice and that you would have our backs and support parental choice. And I asked Sean, where did this vaccine clinic come from? In a school setting? Who approved that? And his answer was, I'm really not sure, you know, I was away. So I asked you all the same thing, who approved a vaccine clinic in a Wayne Township public school? Because that's a big no-no in my book and in many parents' book. And it's because that is the first step of what's going to happen. And I said this to various people on this board months ago, that my concern is the government gets an inch and starts doing this in one school. It's going to happen in all schools. And parents are going to be terrified to send their kids into school because they're going to be worried that they're going to get jabbed up in school without parental consent. And I'm really concerned about that. So I'm going to, I'm going to just quote one thing that I read. This is what I think is good, and this is a Board of Education that supports parents and that supports parental choice. What I'm seeing in that school is really scary again. And I am very much for anyone who wants to vaccinate their child, go for it. But why can't we use the Macy's like we did with the adults? Why in a school setting? And then with a disclaimer that this is promoted from Wayne Township Board of Education, right? Because there was a text, and then there was an email that came from Wayne Township School System, okay? So it's being promoted by you guys from the school system, but then there's a disclaimer that says, this has nothing to do with the Wayne Township School System. This is from the Board of Health. I mean, come on, you guys. That's like, that's absolutely ridiculous to me. If you're going to promote it and you're going to have it in a school, then you have something to do with it. And we were just wondering why? Why in the schools? You could do it in Macy's or in any of the numerous abandoned buildings in Wayne. Why in a school? That's really scary. I don't know if that disclaimer is basically your, you know, kind of what the pharma companies do, like the liability, hey, we're not liable in case your kid dies or has an anaphylactic reaction when they get jabbed. I'm not sure if that's what that's there for, but to me, it's confusing. And I'd like to know who voted on this and why it has to happen in school. I read this, and I was like, I wish my Board of Ed would do this. Very recently, the Department of Health, this is from Clark Board of Ed. The Department of Health is making a push for such clinics and put out a request that we deny, and we will continue to deny as long as we are able to. Dr. Grande said. Other Board of Eds are denying vaccine clinics in their schools, and I would love if you could do the same. Thank you.
Address the issue, could we please, I asked them to only allow enough people to sit in 21 seats. So if there is, if there is an issue?
We can take a recess and have a conversation. Okay, we're going to recess for five minutes. Can you handle this situation?
It's supposed to be 21 people. Only seated.
They're going to answer her question. They're going to.
They want you to be able to face that, let me get these lands, they have a plan of this. This is.
Nicholas.
Everybody that's here, one of the questions that I have here, I'm going to turn. One of the questions that I have here is whether or not this meeting aligns with the Open Public Meetings Act. I mean, if you're supposed to permit the public to hear and they can't hear, then you're limiting the passing of.
My work, my...
Whatever, 21 want to stay?
In here?
Now you challenge?
Count up, count up. So...
The, the meetings are scheduled, I don't know if you know or not, but we can see the schedule. There's meetings on Wayne School, West, Wayne School, West, like, there's a V O E tab. The, the public meetings are only, I think, by law, we only need to have one.
That's 21, right?
Okay.
There's a couple standing there.
Is there anyone waiting in the hallway to speak?
I assume so. There's a group of people in the hallway that are told they were allowed to be there.
Well, that's fine. So what the polite thing to do would be, if you've spoken, if you let the other people come in, that would be the polite thing to do. And if you could kindly wear a mask in the school building or you'll have to leave. There's a mask. People, that's a policy. Your school building is an executive order. Well, they have to put on a mask and they have to leave. We're all wearing a mask because it's an, it's an executive order. So if they're not going to wear them, then we'll end the meeting.
Do you want to address the mask or would you like me to say something?
Well, I, I tried, but I'm being hard.
So apparently, we, in order to make the meeting go along, there's some rules that need to be followed. So masks need to be worn in the room. I realize I'm not wearing one. I'm going to detail from the police department. If it would make the situation better, I'll wear one.
One of the most important things that was on here was the... Oh, I'm sorry. Were you just...
No, I just want to move this meeting along so people can move on with their, what they would like to say at the podium.
Why the recess?
All right, they're on, they're on recess to let us get, so it's, again, 21 in the room, everyone in the hallway.
Why is he on recess? Why the recess?
So that the people can leave, come in.
Do you prefer, have my officers wear masks if you prefer that? Wear a sign, give a detail, but if that'll make things better, I'll...
They don't all have to go on recess. They don't all have to go on recess.
All right, let's start the party, folks. Break out the socks. My God.
Nicholas, it's not lunchtime at school, buddy. Have you read that book I sent you?
No.
I, I don't know. I can read it. My cousin just sent it to me and said, you need to start reading this now. So it's a good one. And she usually likes what we like.
You think, uh, this is not, this is not dinner time. This is, this is a meeting. This is a meeting. It's not, it's not snack time. You're violating the executive order and we would like to continue the meeting. If everyone would just cooperate, we can finish.
It's recess time.
Take the towel. Is this what you're going to do?
I'm a teacher. I talk through this thing all day long.
Does it seat here?
Yes.
There's another seat over here.
Good? Happen? Back in? Not yet.
Yeah, they're dealing with them.
Need to stand after a while. I'll start losing feeling in my legs.
Let's get back to the public comment. Ready, Mr. Butler?
Good evening, board members.
State your name, please.
Guys have seen me growing since the, Jennifer Lee, and you've seen me growing since the beginning of the summer. I'm just trying to make as many board meetings as I can until the bitter end in December. But going back to my first board meeting, I came to you in the end of the summer. And I had a daughter who was entering kindergarten and I asked for transparency. And what I've seen take place from August until now has devolved into the exact opposite of transparency. We're sitting in this tiny room where we can barely hear you. I mean, at one point, we might as well have just closed the partition because I'm not sure where we need to go from as a community and a board to try and make this work. But whatever this is, is not bringing the community and the board together. It is not making us trust one another. It's not making us work together. And this is not how education moves forward in any kind of a positive way. You know, there were a lot of people who gathered to speak to you two weeks ago and they came from both sides of, of the fence here. And all of this buildup about books and, you know, whose side were you on? And this person's saying this and this person's saying that. Our community had the chance to actually come out and say the things that were on their minds. And you shut us down. And you know, the sad part about it is, is you also robbed us of the opportunity to actually get to hear each other out. Back in the beginning of this with the whole mask debate, we were coming in asking for parental choice. There were other parents who didn't want that. And interestingly enough, when they were able to give their side and we were able to give our side, I was able to come together with people and speak to them about maybe their point of view that I didn't see before. There was an interfaith leader who had a different viewpoint than I and he and I were able to come together and have an actual civil conversation after this board meeting. So what you actually did two weeks ago is you stripped us of that. And now here we are in this tiny room. And I can't help but feel disrespected. I can't. I don't even have teeth in the game right now because my kid's not in the school district. And I got to tell you something. If you ask me to trust you as my five-year-old right now, there's no confidence here. And I hope you understand where I'm coming from. And that's why I am making every single attempt, as big as I am right now, to come in and let you know this. It is that important. It is that important. I don't want to spend more money on private school than I do on my taxes right now. But I guess at this point, it's imperative. We really need to work on a level of respect here in both ways. But shutting us out like this is not the right way. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else?
Artis Cardenas on Sunset Terrace. Louisa spoke a little bit earlier about a Board of Ed that did the right thing and said no to vaccine clinics in schools. So I just want to read a little bit about that. Clark, New Jersey. At a November 1 Clark Board of Education meeting, Superintendent Dr. Edward Brand, in an effort to u- update the school community and announced to the district would not be hosting student vaccine clinics at any of its buildings. "Very recently, the Department of Health is making a push for such clinics and put a request that we denied and that we will continue to deny as long as we are able to," Grande said. "Our district supports parental choice, not for only masks, but for student vaccinations. And we are denying these vaccine clinics because we do not want to send the implicit message that we are encouraging such vaccinations." Grande continued, "Again, we want to stress that we are encouraging parental choice. Many thanks to the Board of Ed for their support in allowing parental choice." So we are asking for the same thing.
Tori Esposito with Lot Road came here tonight to, first of all, address why there wasn't a bigger issue with the, right before the elections, with the teachers at George Washington. And I'm here tonight waiting for a statement from the head of the WEA using vulgar terms for the candidates who recently won the election, calling them extremists and everything else. So I will sit here and wait for that. Might be at the next meeting. Who knows? I'd also like to address the fact that, lost my train of thought. Of the books. Who, who is on those committees to determine that those books are appropriate? And if they are appropriate, I'd like to talk to them one-on-one. And there's a couple Playboys that my kids can bring in because if that's not pornography, I'm not sure what, to the extent that even comes to. And again, this is a fire hazard. So I don't know why that's not being addressed. And, you know, we talked about we had it at Wayne Valley, we had it at Hills because of the capacity. Now we're making it smaller. We'll continue to show up. There'll be a snowstorm. There'll be a state of emergency. We'll continue to be here if it takes till 2:00 AM. We'll be here. We're parents. We're, they're our children and we, and we'll be here. Thank you.
Is there anyone else coming to the podium?
There have been ongoing misrepresentations from the Board of Ed and superintendent concerning the viewpoints expressed from parents largely associated within the conservative and religious community here in Wayne. For the record, I wish to state that we are not seeking to exclude, discriminate against, or disparage any one individual or group from being heard or represented based on their race, creed, color, gender, or religion. Wayne is a very diverse and inclusive community, something we should all be proud of and grateful for. The Wayne Education Restoration Parent Association was formed because many parents became alarmed at the direction the Board of Education was moving in regarding decisions concerning our children's education. We have endeavored to reach out to the trustees via phone calls, emails, and speaking at the public portion of our Board of Ed meetings. It's become increasingly apparent that you're not hearing or heeding us and what concerns us does not concern you. Thankfully, we were able to be heard through the election process. Congratulations to the newly elected trustees. Now, we will have a measure of hope that our voice and our rights will be considered, which is to champion and defend the rights of parents to exercise freedom of choice and for our children to receive a high caliber of public education. It should be multicultural, yet one that is void of discrimination, social, political, and religious biases. The focus should be placed on advanced academics and supportive of traditional American values of freedom, liberty, and equality for all. Protecting parental autonomy and freedom of choice with specific regard to masks and vaccinations is also paramount to our group. We advocate and publicly stand for the preservation and safeguarding of our precious children's innocent and impressionable hearts and minds. We are unapologetically pro-American, pro-law enforcement, and pro-diversity. And while we continue to stand up against salacious comments on social media and divisive tactics by certain individuals and organizations that misrepresent who we are, we still desire to extend an olive branch to anyone willing to listen and engage in mutually respective, respectful dialogue. We seek answers to issues and have repeatedly looked to you for a response. As concerned parents continue to look through our children's books and curriculum, please be aware we refuse to give up exercising our First Amendment rights to free speech in these Board of Ed meetings. This is not the military and there are no chain-of-command protocols. If there's some local or state statute we're unaware of, please provide it to us. It's not surprising that parents are largely relying upon the public session of the Board of Ed meetings to share their concerns, especially in light of the past few months where many feel trustees have made backroom deals, have intentionally misled the parents, and broken our trust.
Hi, everyone. Peter Rutherford. I think most of you know me. I met Mr. Dr. Toback last week.
A little louder?
Hi. Son of a child with special needs, Peter Rutherford. And I'm mainly here for a personal reason. I'll share one thought towards the public. I just did not see anything relating to my son's...
It was approved this evening, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
And we apologize for the delay.
I appreciate it. I'll just say, as a son with, my son has special needs. Hasn't been educated for many reasons over the last few years. I know you guys have a program which is on the news with the Star, I think it's called. I, my son's never done any of that. I think I got one invitation. I think you could try to, especially with your son being out, try to have your staff reach out more to the parents, especially if a kid's at home who needs the chance to bond with a neurotypical child or any type of child. I think, try to make more of an effort for that. You guys know a lot of my other issues. I'm not going to go into them. But if you could try to make that Star's more, you know, yeah, or more communication, more things. Because my son has been home for certain reasons. But I would have gladly have taken him after school, given him the chance to be with someone. So if you could look into that, that would be great. And I wish everyone luck with your other issues. Thank you.
Anyone else? Make sure everyone has had a chance to speak that wishes to. If there's anyone in the hallway, officer, if you could ask, that would be nice.
Hi, I'm Valdi Jacento. I was a 35-year resident of Wayne and I find it ironic today, on Veterans Day, and first of all, God bless, that this meeting is being held in the way that it is. I attended the last meeting. That never happened. And as a disabled Vietnam veteran, the 19 million veterans in this country and the so many millions of veterans and soldiers that have gone before us to defend this country and to hold up the Constitution. Our forefathers, the very First Amendment that they put in was the freedom of speech. And this forum in a local community is most important, the most important, I think of it. The last meeting, it was such a disgrace to not show up and at least give these people, our people, our parents, our citizens, grandparents, the opportunity to express how they feel to you because it's a board of education. And it's about the education of our children. I didn't think it could get any worse, but this is really much more worse. You have to be out here to feel how we feel as citizens, parents, grandparents of the children of this community. children of this community, who are entrusting them to who we think are people that are supposed to be dialoguing with us and really caring about the children. And a lot of the ways that you're acting are showing us that that's not the case. I can't imagine in your hearts that that isn't the case. I must believe that you people are just like the rest of us, good, honest people that want the best for our children, because they are the future. But why is it that you're treating people this way? Why do you, what are you afraid of? There's not, we're not afraid of you. Why would you be afraid of us and do this, in two meetings in a row, do what you just did? This is disgraceful. I can't think of another word. It's a dishonor to this country and to this community and to these citizens, parents and grandparents, but most of all, it's disgraceful to our children. They deserve better. You know, I was thinking about the program that's sending books off to Uganda. There's been a lot of things that's happened in that country, and a lot of people are supporting it. I wonder if the book that's been in question, Gender Queer, would be nicely wrapped up and sent off to Uganda, and you people would feel comfortable about doing that. I wonder how it would be greeted by the people in Uganda who opened it up and wondered, what in the hell has gone on in the United States of America, that they would give this to children in schools? And that's just one of many. The problem is, we've just barely opened the curtain. Parents don't know what's going on in the schools. And they should.
Thank you.
Hi, Ida Ferrante, the proud president of the Wayne Education Association. The WEA would like to thank the Board for ratifying our contract this evening. There are many hardworking and dedicated teachers and support staff that are grateful for getting their raises before the holidays. It's truly amazing when the Board and the education community can come together and do something good and get along. So, thank you very much, have a good night.
Is there anyone else that hasn't spoken yet that would like to speak?
I don't think so.
Are you sure? Is there anyone in the hallway?
Everybody in the hallway?
That would like to speak?
I just wanted to say something really quick. I just wanted to thank everyone for being here tonight. I know that there are a lot of people who were disappointed that the last meeting did not occur. But I also want to know, because I wanted to share, because I don't know that everybody was able to hear some of the discussion that was being said here before about the vaccine, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but from what I heard, the vaccine clinic is not going to be held at the schools, it's going to be held at the Wayne Department of Health. So that's an issue that, no, 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 it's not going to be held there. No, it's not. It's not going to be held there, it was just moved. Yeah, that's, that's what I said, Mrs. Branson.
She's correct.
So I just wanted to share that. So that was, that was the first thing. Second thing, I've grown up in this town, I've been here for 46 years, and I've been through the Wayne Public Schools, and I know that vaccines are certainly a hot topic right now, but it's not new that vaccine clinics would be held in a school setting on an off time when classes are not being held. I personally, along with my classmates, got vaccines in the school buildings when we were growing up. So it's not new, so I just wanted to share that with everybody. And last thing, regarding the meetings, I've looked at the meeting schedule online on the Wayne Board of, the Wayne School page, and they're laid out for the whole year. This is the scheduled location for the meetings, it hasn't been moved here. This is the actual location where it's scheduled to be held once a month. The other meeting that's held, the other, always, if you go on. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just letting you know.
She's got the floor.
Yeah, I'm just, if you go online, not send anything that's not online.
This is Branson, just address the Board, not the audience.
Okay, so I just, I just wanted to, you know, clarify some concerns that parents may have. I've asked some questions to some of the board members here, and I've done some, you know, research online to see, you know, if this is the pattern of where meetings have been held, and it's, and from what I can see, it's always been one meeting here, one meeting at the municipal building. I think most people have attended the meetings at the municipal building pre-COVID, there were, you know, when COVID happened, there was, there were the Zoom meetings. So I don't think we had as many people that were as interested in coming to these meetings before COVID. So this is, it wasn't an issue pre-COVID, so that was it, I just wanted to share those issues.
Anyone else who hasn't spoken yet?
Anyone else?
Hello, good evening, my name is Wendy Lemandry, I live at Avery's Harrison Wayne. Just want to sort of restate the general opinion that the venue tonight is insulting, to say the least. It's insulting, it's uncomfortable, it's disrespectful, and it's a purposeful decision. And no one, it's absolutely ridiculous to think that the taxpayers in Wayne have to be in this situation like sardines, uncomfortable, hot, and yet, you know what? The beautiful thing about it is the passion is here, and it's not going away. We are here. The other thing I want to say is that it is my understanding that a second grade classroom had a visit from a school nurse today who spoke to the students in second grade about the importance of COVID vaccination. Would any of you think that's appropriate? Anybody? If you're a parent, you talk to your kids about that. That's why they're two and they don't vote, right? Or second grade and they don't vote. It's unacceptable. And this happened in James Fallon School. Okay? So the point of the matter is that parents are parents, and we are in control of our children, not you, and not the teachers. That's all I have to say.
Anytime now.
I don't know if someone.
Does anyone want to speak?
Okay. So, I, I do, so, I understand how some people like the vaccine. If you want your kid to get it, give it to them. And I, I'll, I'll research more about where it's being held, but I can't speak about something that I don't know 100% about, and that's when I will speak about it, when I know everything about it. But the venue, the reason why I think everyone is upset is because it's very, it's very uncomfortable, and you heard that. I just think everyone in here, all they want is to ask peacefully, please, just give us an explanation at the end of the meeting why you didn't change the venue, why there's no, no choice by the Board of Education to change the venue so it could be more suitable for the number of people that you all know come to this meeting. As you know, this is not suitable, a suitable venue for the amount of people that want to come here and speak, and it definitely intimidated, intimidated plenty of people here to not speak and just leave because it was also carried out for a long time before the public portion came, exactly, a little over an hour, and I could understand there's different things, but being a small venue, having to wait a long time, makes people tend to go home, and it steps right on their First Amendment right of their freedom of speech. And this, this tax, the taxpayer money that goes into this town, and I hear from my parents all the time that they have to pay, it is definitely, definitely not deserving what the taxpayers in this town are getting here in this room. And I hope that we keep in the municipal building, that's, that's the standardized location, and that the next meeting like this, the public work session is held in a bigger venue because of the number of people. We go, and I'm going to look down, now I'm going to go back to September, the September 24th or 23rd meeting, yes, September 23rd. That was probably the best meeting, the public came together, everyone was happy, everyone came together until this Gender Queer book came along. Then everyone started to hate each other again, and come up here and scream and yell, and that is not what we want. We just want this town to be a happy town, that's what we want more than nothing. The people in this room are not fighting because they want there to be a fight, they're fighting for things to go back to normal, and that's all they want. They want transparency, which this is definitely not transparency, and they just want answers to all their questions, which we have not been getting. And as Ms. Kazan, you say, I believe it was the Deputy Chief of Staff of the Governor, you say, that's on my speed dial, maybe you should give a call and ask the exacts and the details of the mask mandate, because I think that's a definite confusion we have in our schools, because the teachers don't know, the students don't know, how do we know who's right? Put together an email and tell them what's right and wrong.
Thank you very much, that's your time. Okay, move to close.
I feel silly sliding in here again, but one more thing I just thought was really worth mentioning, and I think is so compelling. The same situation that happened in that second grade classroom, the students were asked by a show of hands, who has been vaccinated? Can I ask, what in the world is the purpose of that? How, it's so disturbing, it's so disturbing that we would isolate and, and separate kids based on vaccination status in the second grade? Thank you.
Who's in here been vaccinated?
Second? Second? Mrs. Potteb, okay, sir, the public portion has already been closed. We'll answer your questions now.
They just moved it, they moved the advertised location. Mr. Moffett, they had it originally in the, in the building, and then they moved it here. Next week is in the municipal building.
Okay.
There's no doubt.
Okay, all right, are you ready to listen? I have some comments on answers to your questions. Mr. Robertson, the session is closed, you can be seated. We are answering, it's our turn to talk now.
Was a vote taken while I was working my way up?
Well, I'm sorry, sir.
I mean, I indicated I would, I indicated I would back.
Well, I'm sorry, we closed the portion.
Well, why should, well, that's okay.
We made the motion.
You know, I was a fan of Sam Cooke.
One more week.
Sam Cooke wrote a, wrote a song called, "A Change Is Gonna Come, and The Change Will Come."
Oh, just as a heads up, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so we'll start with the room. This is where we've always held our public work sessions. This is not new, this is not a punishment, this is not to stifle public comment. We have them here for a very specific reason. This is where we go over in-depth discussion on things like a Booster Club manual, or anything else that we would need, other papers. We had an executive session here, we were going over documents and salary guides, and those things are in our administrators' offices, and we have lengthy discussions about new initiatives. That's why we have work sessions here. Our once-a-month public meeting is held in the council chambers. Now, I can have our attorney explain the Open Public Meetings Act to you and what we're actually required to have, which is, could be as few as one meeting a month, am I correct, Mr. Geppert?
That's correct.
We choose to have two meetings a month, we don't have to have two meetings a month, we could have three meetings a month, we could cut it down to, like I said, just the one. But we base our meetings on whether we have business to conduct. These meetings are not just for public comment, these meetings are to do the business of the Board. We have a school district to run, and there's a lot of work that goes along with that. So there are times when there's very little business, and we may cancel a meeting, not unusual. I'm not saying that's what happened at the last meeting, I made a public statement on that, I don't plan to repeat it. So no, this is not a shenanigan. We are having another meeting a week from now, because the schedule allows for us to have it next week, because the following week is Thanksgiving. So there's, there's no consistency with date, it's not always the first and third Thursday, because things come up, holidays, et cetera. Sometimes we'll cancel a meeting for weather, it's not uncommon. So the accusation that we're doing this to stifle public comment is just that, that's your opinion, I guess, but that's not what's happening here. This has always been our MO. As far as the vaccine clinic, first I'm finding out about it, but as far as having it in a school on a Saturday, I don't necessarily see the harm, but I understand it's already been moved, and it's been run by the Department of Health. The school district is not handing out vaccines. That would definitely have to have been approved by the Board, but any public building can be used by the public through a request, which if the township makes a request to use our building, like the PAL wants to have a basketball practice, or the Boys and Girls Club, we don't approve that, we don't need to approve that. That's done through the administration process. Okay. Vaccine clinic. I think I've answered. Mr. Rutherford? Yeah, so again, we'll be at council chambers in a week, and hopefully everyone that feels they didn't have a chance to speak here this evening is certainly welcome to join us again. That's, anyone else have any comments to make? Well, I'm waiting to see if the Board has any comment, and then we can wrap it up. And happy Veterans Day, by the way. Mr. Dr. Toback, I'm sorry, now I'm calling you Mr. Doctor.
It's okay, it's a long night. So as Mrs. Kazan indicated, right, she already talked about the vaccine clinic, and the fact is that the township and the Board of Ed regularly partner on a lot of different things, for example, the sidewalk, the, there's all kinds of different ways the township and the municipality partner together. In this particular case, there was a vaccine clinic that was set for Anthony Wayne Middle School, it is moved, but it's moved, interestingly, because of popular demand. In other words, the vaccine, there's, there's different sides to the story, some people like the vaccine, so the fact is the vaccine appointments filled up almost immediately. But anyway, it's not an issue, because it has been moved to the municipal building, and that's where the vaccine clinic will be held in multiple locations. There's been some comments about the fact that questions aren't being answered, or that there's a lack of transparency, at least as far as I'm concerned. I know that at the end of every board meeting, I have done my best to write down every question that every member of the public asks. Then after that, I do my best to respond. In some cases, people make statements, which I don't necessarily respond to, they ask questions, and so when there are questions, I answer them. So really, there's probably about a 10 or 15 minute period at the end of every board meeting where we answer questions. As far as, I guess that's basically, the only thing I would say is, as far as the concern about inconsistency in mask requirements, this is at Anthony Wayne Middle School, so this is a topic you brought up, Nicholas. I would say the important thing to do is to speak to your principal. The Board of Education here would not necessarily have an answer for you right away. However, I would like to call your attention to the fact that you have classmates, you have teachers that have a variety of medical issues, you have people who are immunocompromised, you have people who have had organ transplants, you have people who have cancer. So it could be a situation where you have somebody who is in proximity that you don't know about, that has a medical condition that it's probably best for everyone to wear a mask around, okay? So we don't go revealing that information to the public, but that certainly is a possibility, okay? And then as far as the situation that was described, there was a concern about some activity of our nurses at Fallon Elementary School. We read about that particular issue on social media, we already conducted an investigation, and I would like to speak to the parent that raised that issue. Of course, at this point, I don't believe anyone spoke to the teacher, the nurse, or the principal, and the issue was brought here to the Board, and I would, at this point, based on our preliminary discussion, I would dispute the account of what was presented here this evening. I think there is more to it that has to be expressed, and like I said, we did do a preliminary investigation, and what we found is contrary to what was reported here. I think that covers all the questions I've asked.
Anyone else? Move to close?
Move to close.
Mrs. Potteb and Mrs. Cher. Okay. Leading adjournments, thank you.